Good morning and welcome to the January 2nd County Commission meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
I'd like to remind people to silence their cellphones and the meeting documents are available next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Craig or Carol would be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go into special business. The first item is, I already opened the meeting. Second number two, item number two is a consideration of motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes, corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All people have approved that. Item number three is to select the current commission chairperson for 2018. Are there any nominations for that?
Nominate Commissioner Hyberger.
Is there a second?
A second, then?
We have a motion and a second for Commissioner Hyberger. Are there any other nominations? We can cease nominations and vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Hyberger say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I'm going to abstain.
We have four yeses and two abstains. One abstained? Okay, I didn't hear Jeff, sorry. You got this one for 2018. Finally, a change.
Gerald wants that. Okay, good morning and we will continue on. Okay, item, item number four is selection of the commission vice chairman for 2018. Is there nomination?
I move for Commissioner Bender, second.
Motion and a second to approve, or to nominate Commissioner Bender for vice chairman. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number five is designation of the official county newspaper. Craig.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Every year, at the first meeting in January, like today, the commission must designate three newspapers to serve as the legal newspapers for printing of notices as well as minutes and other materials that are required by South Dakota codified law. Letter was sent out to local media outlets, the newspapers, back at the end of October, beginning of November, requesting submissions. And we received submissions from several media outlets as far as their rates per line and we also requested some circulation numbers from each of the papers as you see in your memo. Included in the memo for you as well are the expenditures regarding a specific commission, publishing expenditures, it's primarily minutes that the commission needs to print, as well as a total cost for notices for the county. Items that would be countywide would include notices from the state's attorney's office as an example for different legal actions that are being taken. And the highway also has some notices amongst others as well. So we do have representatives from each of the media outlets who submitted proposals and I believe Matt Anderson is also here from Anderson Publishing to speak about papers that he represents. So I will turn the floor over to you and certainly you can ask any questions of me or of the media outlets that are present.
Okay, are there any questions for Craig at this point? Okay, I guess we'll go to the media outlets if you would like to. If anybody wants to come out and speak, we would appreciate that. Just identify yourself and your newspaper, your address.
Hello, my name is Garrick Moritz. As you'll see from the board up there, I'm the smallest of the small fries. I own the Garrettson Gazette, it's a weekly newspaper up in Garrettson. And why should you pick me as opposed to some of the other larger media outlets? And yes, the Argus Leader being the top. I understand you want to get your minutes out to the most amount of people. However, lots of folks in the Garrettson area are registered voters and many of the commissioners I have met and have advertised with my paper because I have a strong loading block. So I think it would be probably advisable that you guys publish your minutes with me. I know people read them in my paper. And if you have any questions at all, please ask them to me.
Are there any questions for Garrick? Anderson Publication, did you want to say a word if you give your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Matt Anderson with Anderson Publications, based in Canastota. Over the last several years, we've had a legal newspaper with either Hartford or Humboldt. Those had recently been joined into one newspaper, the Minnehaha Messenger. Reason for the name change when we combined them was try to get more of an inclusion with Colton and Crooks. So kind of what Garrick said, you know, we're a little smaller, but we are trying to incorporate four communities in the area into the newspaper. And I'd say we've had relations in the past with the county commissioners as a legal newspaper. And we're small, but we're local and we would appreciate your vote in that regards.
Other questions for Mr. Anderson? I have a couple. I don't think that we had what's your, I did receive an email from you and I think the other commissioners did too, but I don't have on our spreadsheet here what your circulation is and what your price per line is.
Okay, I did send that in, but I have made a copy. Is it okay to?
Yep, distribute it.
Our paper and the Garrettson paper are the same size. Once upon a time, I used to own that and so it's the same size as what the Messenger is and so the line rates and the legal rates are the same.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, Mr. Anderson, I just want to point out that there was a little bit of a mix-up on sending your stuff in there and I appreciate you being here today to advocate on your behalf and I appreciate it.
Certainly, I appreciate the opportunity. Nice meeting you.
If there's no more questions, I guess I would look for action from the commission. Thoughts?
Good morning, Commission, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Before we do this here, I just wanted to make some comments on the current situation that we do have with our official newspaper and that is, you know, the delivery down there. We've not moved since 1961 down here, but it's been sporadic. And when we do report a missing paper, we never get to speak to a human being, we get offered the online version. I understand that things are moving forward and it's a, it's a difficult situation, but I also do sense throughout the state, talking to other county auditors, that there is a desire to move into a different area and that would be the digital version of that. I realize we're a long ways from that and currently the way the statutes read, there are some qualifications. One of them is that the content of a newspaper be diversified and involve a number of things and that's spelled out in the statute. The other one is that it has to be a paid subscription. So I would tell you that not only do the taxpayers pay to print this, but they also pay to access it and I'm not sure about the equity in that. I also, saying that, I also understand in some small towns that the newspaper is a vital part of their main street business and they're reluctant to lose it. However, in a larger municipality, maybe some other options could be explored going forward with that. So I just wanted to bring those things to your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Litz. Question, Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I, I think that we've not been well-served by the incumbent paper here in Sioux Falls and I would strongly advocate for supporting local businesses, local entrepreneurs and the people of our area by choosing Anderson Publications and the Garrettson Paper to print our minutes and our legal notices. And if, you know, I wait discussion, but I'll make that as a motion when, when that's appropriate.
So your motion is for Anderson Publication and Garrettson?
That would be my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
A second for conversation.
Yeah.
A motion and a second for conversation. Comments?
I have a question. Don't we select three?
We select three.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Barth, Bender?
You know, I mean, I understand small-town papers and the need for them and I understand the frustration with the largest publication in this area. And I, and I know that we are working on some legislation to maybe change these rules to better serve the people, to provide what this law is intended, to provide people access at the lowest cost possible so that they can be informed about what's happening in government. But here, I don't see how we can't include the Argus Leader as one of the publications. Their, their average distribution is so far in excess and that the whole purpose of this is that we provide the most people the greatest access to these minutes. You know, you can debate the merits of the law and how it, how it reads and whether, what its purpose is in today's world, the communication formats that people are accessing, but I don't see how we can leave the Argus Leader off the list.
I think that our responsibility is to cover the whole county entirely. The Argus Leader does have the most circulation, but I don't believe that the majority of the people in the rural communities get the Argus Leader on a regular basis. I would be in favor of making sure that we've covered all of our bases by selecting every place that's not a duplication and go from that point forward.
So did you want to make a substitute motion or do you want me to go forward with the motion we have and then add a third newspaper?
We can go with the motion that was made and then we'll go to the next one.
Okay.
Chair, could I just make a comment here?
Commissioner Barth?
You know, every time we have a contentious issue, the room is full of people who say, "No one ever told us" and the stuff is published all the time, no one ever reads it. They're all amazed that this hearing is scheduled, they only heard about it because their neighbor over the back fence told them. I can't force people to read it, but at the same time, you know, here we have meeting after meeting where we don't even get a reporter from that newspaper. And the idea of sending our money to Arizona or wherever the hell they keep their operation as opposed to someone within 50 miles of here is abhorrent to me.
Mr. Litz, did you have a comment?
I do.
Before I take a motion or take a vote?
Just one more thing here, you know, I've, I've looked at another publication that is widespread in this county and that's the Shopping News and their, their, their distribution is free and they also have a free online presence. So I, you know, in the future, we may want to look that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the table for, to approve the Garrettson and the Anderson for two of our legal newspapers. We do have an opportunity to have a third one because that's the law. So Commissioner Karski, do you have a comment?
Garrettson?
No.
And Anderson?
It's, it's Anderson Publication and Garrettson Gazette was.
Are we voting then for all five? Is that?
No, that's two, that's two legal newspapers, correct? And we still have?
I believe that's correct.
One more.
Okay, understood. Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two and we have room for one more. Is there another? Is there another? Commissioner Benega?
I believe we need to include the Argus Leader. I don't necessarily agree with the system that's been placed, but it does have the largest circulation and we do need to support that from the fact that 82% of the people who live in the city limits of Sioux Falls, so I don't think we have much choice on that one for now until we straighten out what's going on up here.
I have a motion for the Argus Leader, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
I would just point out that just because we're fossilized in the position we are right now doesn't mean that another newspaper may not move into another community like Del Rapids or even Sioux Falls. I'd love to have a real newspaper move to Sioux Falls.
I have a motion, excuse me, Commissioner Karski?
Question, excuse my puzzlement here. So if this motion goes through, are we going to have all five? Is that the idea?
No, you'll have, you'll have the Argus Leader, the Garrettson Gazette and the Anderson Publication. Commissioner Bender?
We, we do need to note that the Argus Leader Media proposal includes the Argus Leader, the Brandon Valley Challenger and the Del Rapids Tribune.
So it is? Count them for me, somebody, please. Who are we all going to have? We're going to have, based on that then, we're going to have the Argus, the Brandon Valley Challenger, the Del Rapids Tribune, Anderson Publications. The only one that we don't have is the Garrettson Gazette?
We have the Garrettson Gazette, but.
We have the Garrettson Gazette. So we will have all of them then?
No, because we are approving the Argus Leader at 49 cents per line. We're not approving the Del Rapids one at 29 cents per line and we're not approving the Garrettson at 28 cents per line. So if the Argus Leader decides to publish them, they will do them on their own cost. Am I correct, Craig?
Yes, you are. The Argus Leader Media submitted proposals for three separate papers. So you can pick one out of the three if you so choose. Each of the papers are, if you would choose to select each of the papers, it would be a cost for each paper according to the cost per line that is listed on the chart.
Yep.
Understand.
Clarification.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second for the Argus Leader.
Question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Is the Argus Leader Media here today?
I don't believe so.
Oh my goodness, they're not here.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. No, motion passes four to one. Sorry, Commissioner Barth. All right, well, that, let's move on to more fun. Item number six is establish a record for the non-elected department heads. Do we have, Craig, are you speaking to this or is no one speaking to this? Okay. Are we waiting for Melinda? I guess we could, I'll find the agenda item and we'll see what it is here. So one of the first items of business is that the commission each year needs to ensure that the non-elected department heads are on record for the minutes. And so if we would consider a motion to direct the following non-department heads as of January 1st, 2018, and I am going to read them because I think that has been what we've done in the past. Carol Muller is the commission office, Monty Wattenbach is information technology, DJ Boothie is highway, Jamie Grabett, Juvenile Court Services, Mark Krins, facilities, Bill Hoskins, museum, Carrie Jo Dever, Human Services, Scott Anderson, planning and zoning in parks, Julie Holfer, public advocate, Tracy Smith, public defender, Carrie Benz, Human Services, Diane Rickema, equalization, Lynn D. Young, emergency management, Paul Niedernhaus, Metro Communications, Ralph Hammer, weed and pest, David Sorensen, veteran service officers, and Charles Martinell, outreach advisor. If there's no questions, I would take a motion for both.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, item number seven is appoint the Minnehaha County Coroner.
Make a motion to approve Dr. Snell as the coroner for the January through December 2018.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is determine the 2018 salary for the Minnehaha County Commission. And I will pull that one up here. South Dakota codified law 7-7-5 requires that the Board of County Commissions to establish their salaries at the first regular meeting of each year. If the Board fails to determine a salary, then the salary is set by statute. For the Minnehaha County Commissioner, the statute salary would be 8,193. In 2007, in our budget deliberations, we came up with, I'm looking, sorry, I'm cruising through this, 2,000, $27,830.40 for the commissioners with an additional $1,000 for the chairperson. At this point, I would ask you to either leave it at the $8,000, which is the statute, or make a motion to approve a salary for the commission.
Make a motion to approve the salary for the commission.
I think we need to have a little more, set the annual salary at, and then if you want to change the commission, the chairman's salary. So there's a motion in the, written out in our packet.
For whatever reason, I'm not.
Do you want me to read it? There's a resolution. A resolution to elect salary rather than the per diem method of payment to the county commissioners and to set the 2018 salary at $27,830.40 except for the salary of the commission chairman, which will be set at $28,849.60.
That would be my motion to elect salary rather than the per diem method of payment to the county commissioners and set it at $27,830.40 except for the salary of the commission chair, which will be $1,000 more.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bender?
You know, we struggle with this every year. I struggle with it anyway, every year. I don't, I run into people all the time that are shocked at how much county commissioners earn, but I also don't, none of them also say that they'd ever do it for, no matter how much money you paid them, which probably says something about the five of us sitting up here. But, you know, I don't, I don't think really any of us do this for the salary that's, that's given here. But at the same time, I, I feel strongly that we need to encourage people to, to take this position and I also think that, I think there is some benefit to having a mix of people who are retired and working other jobs and if, if we didn't, there would be a whole lot of people who wouldn't be able to take this job if, if the compensation was per diem or some more nominal rate than it is. So for that reason and basically for that reason alone, I'd support this.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just say also that incremental increases are much more palatable than gigantic ones. The legislature is contemplating, what, 40% or 80%? I don't know, but if they raise their salary, you know, 1% a year or 3% every three years, it sure would be a lot easier than to raise it by double or triple digits at, you know, long intervals.
Additional comments? I have a motion and a second for the motion that was read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the resolution to set election polling locations for 2018. Auditor Litz?
Good morning, Commission, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office again. Today is the annual review and resolution of election workers' pay rates and precinct rental rates. We're requesting a bump up from, for 2018 for the election workers that has not been changed since 2014 due to increasing difficulty of recruiting workers, especially superintendents. This request would more accurately reflect current labor market conditions. Requesting the following pay sets. First, that precinct superintendents are paid $180 per election. That comes out to $15 an hour. Precinct deputies are paid $150 per election. That comes out to $1,250 per hour. The absentee precinct counting center and precinct assistants are paid $12 an hour. Setups and teardowns still at a $15 flat rate. Schools will still be at a flat rate of $15. $10 stipend per telephone, per precinct. As we go into these precincts, a lot of them, the landlines are locked up in offices, so we need to, we need to access that and we're asking a lot for somebody's personal telephone to be tied up that day. Also, last year, Commissioner Bender made a comment to me that we've got some fluctuation in the amount of money that we have, we pay these precincts to stay open all day. And a lot of times it involves having somebody come down there at 6:30 in the morning and then come back at eight or nine at night to lock the place up. We've got people walking in there all day in November, they'll traipse in a lot of snow. There's some things going on. The rates started out at $50 a day. However, some of the places that we've been removed from concerning schools and churches with schools in them, we've been on a quest to get some new places. Tom Greco and myself, city clerk, have worked diligently on that and we've been turned down and rebuffed a lot of times and, and I think maybe just having that $100 stipend for opening those, or keeping those places open, number one, it's more fair and number two, may entice some of these places to open their doors for precincts. We had a tough time this year locating some places. State law says we have to, we're supposed to have the voting location inside the precinct. More and more, we are getting places that are a block or two out of the precinct because that's the only place available. So I would respectfully request that you consider my, my increases here today. They've not been increased since 2014.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Litz. And I will recognize that this is item number nine, not number 10, as I just previously read. So is there any questions for Bob on raising of rates of the election workers? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Now, item number two of which is approval resolution to set the election polling locations for 2018.
Okay, Bob Litz with the Auditor's Office again here. This resolution is in accordance with statute 12-14-1, the Auditor's Office requesting approval of the listed polling places. There have been three changes to the polling locations since 2016, but the precinct boundaries are all the same. City of Sioux Falls, we use most of our precincts, but their changes will be addressed with voter information and card mailers, as will ours. When we change a precinct, we send a card out to everybody in that precinct. The following precinct numerical changes have been affected due to city, district reorganization. No, it's just the number of the precinct that's changing here. Now, we've got three precincts that, that were moved, but the numerical ones that have changed. And most folks don't, don't know what their number is for the precincts. So this is more of a bookkeeper or clerical type thing so we can do our programming and keep track of them numerically. But anyway, precinct 012 is now 519, 18 is now 313, 24 is now 413, 37 is now 520, 38 is now 521, and 515 is now 414. We have a total of 71 precincts in the county with 54 of those being inside the city limits. Our current listing of the precinct polling locations is provided. I'm asking, the action I'm asking today is to approve the polling locations.
Any questions for them?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion and a, okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, Commissioner Benega, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Just a suggestion and one of the things I think we all hear the most about is the fact that there's no continuity between the location, the number and who's responsible for the election. I think we have to get to a point where all of those are in the same place each time we have an election and they're done by the same leadership, if you will, and everybody agrees to that before we go into the hodgepodge of deciding what kind of equipment we're going to use, where we're going to use it and how that's going to be used. So anything that we can do to solidify a pattern would be a good idea, I think.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Benega, and I too have advocated for that for a long time. And the city is using the precincts, they're using our same voting equipment, they're not using e-poll books, the school's the odd duck out in their off years. Now, this year, the, the city and school election is going to be combined with the city administering it, but next year, it still remains to be seen what the school district chooses to do. I have no control over them, Commissioner. I wish we would do it the same way every, every time. I get, I, I wind up getting the brunt of those calls about people being confused what to do. We do reach out to publish these polling places and, and get that information out there every election. You know, another confounding situation is the one that I've mentioned with the, you know, when I first got here, we had 14 school locations, I'm down to three, that are owned by the school district right now. A lot of the churches that have, have kids, schools in them, they're also reluctant. So we've had a shift in, in polling locations lately and I'm hoping, I mean, I had some in 2016 between the, between the primary and the general election and now we've got three more changes here and they're all for the reasons that I've stated before. Personally, you know, I've lived in the same house since 1997 and I have been to five different locations and all that happened before I got to this office. So that's my disclaimer that I'm not, I'm not doing this as a personal effort to put new places and things just happen. Buildings close down, businesses, the business that goes on in the buildings just change. But yes, I agree with you. I would like to solidify this and have the election so folks know where they're going. For the three new ones that, that the city, that the city and we have, we will be sending out polling cards to the voters in those precincts, letting them know of the change in location.
Thank you, Litz. Is there anything else?
If I may, just add one other comment. It's not only. It's not only about the number of calls you get. Our organization, for example, has always done it when asked, but we don't get asked all the time based on, frankly, who's asking. But more importantly, I would say we probably turn away or redirect 75 to 100 people minimum every time we have an election that are in the wrong place. They're not calling you. They're coming to the wrong place. Do they go vote because they went to the wrong place and it's colder than bijebe's, or it's too hot, or frankly, they don't like the traffic because they've gone to the wrong place in the first time? So I think there has to be some continuity, again, brought to the system. And it's not at the convenience of the people who are running the polling location. It's about the people who have that opportunity.
I agree. Appreciate your comments. And we also appreciate the Center for Active Generations being a longtime polling location. It works out well down there.
Madam Chair, I totally agree with Commissioner Bennigan on this. And I know a fellow I am aware of, one year when we were using the super precincts, he went to vote at his regular place. It was closed, and he asked someone where to go, and they said, "Well, you can vote anywhere." But no one could tell him where anywhere was.
Well, you know, and to that end here, not to disparage folks, but there are certain people who get up election day and decide to go vote. And we had a bunch of them the last election, the presidential election, that hadn't voted in eight years. And a lot has changed in eight years. So they get up, vote every eight years. Voter confusion unfortunately has always been there, and I think there's going to be a certain amount of that, just due to the fact that some folks, they get up that morning and go try to vote someplace. The election center thing has really, you know, when that was tried, really did cause some problems and confusion because the city was doing it for a while, and the school, and then we were at precincts. However, now, the two main largest elections, the city and the county's elections, are consistent with their standard places for voting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Litz. I am going to have a point of order, more or less, is this is approve a resolution. So the person who made the motion, would you mind making your motion to approve the resolution? And then second that, approve the resolution instead of just approving the agenda item?
I make the motion to approve the resolution to set the polling places as outlined by the auditor.
I'm resolved to approve.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Can we vote on the new motion to set, to approve the resolution? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commission, on both of those calls.
Now, we will move on. Item number 11 is consider a motion to set the county human services funeral rate for 2018. Good morning, Lori.
Good morning. Lori Montes, Assistant Director at Human Services. Coming forward this morning to ask you to look at the rate for funeral expenditures that the county provides to those that need the indigent burial assistance. Last year, if you remember, we came forward and got approved a $2,000 flat fee, and so we utilized that in 2017. It turned out that some of the funeral homes were struggling to provide a traditional burial for that $2,000 flat fee, knowing that their expenses were substantially more than that. And so we had a meeting in October with some of the funeral home directors. Commissioner Karski was present. And we had a conversation about changing the traditional burial fee amount to $3,000 and leaving the cremation amount at $2,000. And so that's what we are looking at for 2018.
Okay. Those are questions for Lori. Commissioner Bender?
Can you describe the process that's used to determine whether somebody's approved for a cremation or a regular burial?
Well, the next of kin gets to make that decision. And so typically, kind of how the process goes is the family presents at the funeral home, and there's a screening tool that's used that helps them to see kind of what some of the expenditures are going to be and whether then that person is referred to the county for the assistance. So once that happens, then typically the family member or friend, whomever's representing the deceased person, will come in and complete the application process. And so really, it's the family member who, by statute, gets to make that decision.
Commissioner Bender?
So the screening tool that's used at the funeral home, is that something that the county prepared for the funeral home?
Yes, we developed that a few years back, just because, to help, you know, basically families to know kind of what expenses are going to be expected for the, you know, depending on what their choice is for the burial. So not all of the funeral homes use that consistently, but the larger ones definitely do. And I think that helps as far as maybe fewer people being referred to the county for assistance because the funeral homes are then able to kind of explain the fees and what, you know, willing to work with the families.
Commissioner Karski, did you have a question?
Yes, a couple of comments, actually. We met with, I can't remember, was it, who were the funeral homes that were present?
George Boomenmiller.
That's okay. That's what I was going to assume. And we met with them, and they do use the screening tool, and they're very appreciative of it. And they said that if everybody used it, it'd probably make their lives a whole lot simpler. So not using it is, I guess, more their issue for not using it. Funerals are expensive. I mean, we all know that. And unfortunately, when somebody dies, it has to be paid for. The funeral home directors we met with were very happy with these rates, and they said that they could live with them. And in the past, we've had some issues even where we set these rates, and some of the funeral homes said, "Well, we just can't do that." But at this point, it appears that everybody is willing to work with this and to use these rates, which in my mind are a very good deal, I hate that term, good deal for the county. So this is a very, it's acceptable to all parties, and I encourage your acceptance of it.
Commissioner Bender?
One follow-up question I had is that, I mean, funerals are expensive. Cremations are significantly less expensive than regular burials, and I was wondering if there was any conversation with perhaps reducing the fee for the cremations to offset the amount, given that regular burials are a much smaller percentage of what ends up getting chosen and billed through the county? Whether there is any discussion of reducing the fee that's charged for cremations?
We didn't discuss that in particular. I think the $2,000 flat fee is actually still, in many cases, less than what the funeral homes' expenses are. We don't often see kind of the itemized information from the funeral homes, but when we do, it looks like cremations run anywhere from about $2,000 to $3,500, and that traditional funerals run about $7,000 to $8,000.
In the future, I'd suggest, if this comes up again, since it's come up the last two years, that there be more discussion on the costs reimbursed for cremations.
And if you notice the information that we submitted, cremations are the bulk of what we're seeing. I think we were all kind of surprised when we ran numbers, and it was 80% of the chosen service is cremation.
Which has changed. Commissioner Barrett?
I would just thank you, Jean, for those comments. The county government takes care of all the basics, I tell you. But a couple of years back, we did propose to the legislature that they allow us to cremate everyone that needs the county, the taxpayer, to pay for that. And the legislature said, "Well, that's just a Minnehaha County problem. Besides that, the deceased may not want to be cremated." And my view is that, you know, if their brothers and sisters at their church or synagogue want to come and get them, come and get them. Otherwise, if it's the taxpayer, we ought to do it for the cheapest that we can. And again, that bill failed in the legislature. But I don't see why we have to spend extra money on people that have passed away and are depending on us for their final disposal.
Okay. I need a motion and a second. Is there a motion to approve the, this year's fees for funeral homes?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to routine business. Item number 12 is approve the county commission meeting minutes from 12/26/2017.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We need an amendment, sorry. That's what happens when you jump into a new spot. So we need to move to amend the minutes, so that the motion regarding the transfer of contingency funds included the ASN and reads the following. Motion by Heiburger, seconded by Barr, to transfer $96,000 from the contingency fund to pretrial services, $5,000 plus ASN, 1-5-2-0-0, slash, full-time salaries, and $64,000 to ASN, 15-2-96, slash, other expenses, and $15,000 to juvenile alternative diversion programs, ASN, 16-2-2-3. There were three As, and this is what the original motion was? That's the, the one that I just read is what we need to change it to. The original motion said, "That motion by Heiburger, seconded by Barr, to transfer $69,000 from the contingency fund to pretrial services and $15,000 to juvenile alternative diversion programs." The reason we have to change it is it just needs to be spelled out. So do you want to tell me how you want to do this? Do Commissioner Barth, I have to do this? Or does it matter?
It doesn't matter, as long as you make a motion to amend the minutes.
Would somebody make a motion to amend the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the minutes as read.
Why would I amend something when I didn't do it wrong?
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now we'll go on to the next one. Item number 13 is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,044,812.64. Is there a motion?
The bills.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments?
Just a comment on, Bob Litz in the auditor's office, just a comment, a big-ticket item this year here. It's the first of the year, like we always do, is a workers' comp renewal. And that amount was $393,205. This year, we did get a discount of $38,888 because of our claims. And out of that amount, the biggest pay, the biggest chunk of that renewal goes to the jail. It was $115,671. And it's not a rap against the jails, it just is the way it is. So it's about a little over 25% of our work comp costs are driven by the jail.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any additional comments?
One more comment. We had a E-911 transfer fee of about $190,000.
Okay. Thank you. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is reports. Item A is the FAN, the Financial Action Network.
Commissioner?
Mister?
If I may?
Yep.
I just kind of introduced this. A lot of people in here have been waiting to get to this point. Appreciate your patience, first of all. Several months ago, I came to all of you and asked, or solicited your questions. I was looking for input on creating a financial action network. Basically, take a look at the county finances, a deep dive, if you don't mind. I got Auditor Litz on board, and I have to thank him and his staff because they put together almost all the paperwork and information that we look at. So thank you to their help. The smartest thing I did was get Craig Dewey from our office involved as project manager. Without Craig's help, this truly would not have been so well organized and off the ground. And I'm going to turn it over to Craig for his introduction of everything that's going on here. So Craig, thank you for your help.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner Karski. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. As Commissioner Karski outlined, the Financial Action Network members really took the yeal men and yeal women's work of analyzing county finances and looking at it to ensure that the county would be in a stable position moving into the future. And in the last two rows here, we have a number of our FAN members here, and we are very fortunate in Minnehaha County, not only to have people interested in public service like yourselves up here, but we have individuals like the Financial Action Network members and Keith Severson, who is also a member, and the spokesman who will be coming up here in a second. But thank you to those individuals. That's one reason why we continue to have a growing and thriving community, and we also need to thank their employers as well for the time that they took. And I'd be remiss if we didn't also acknowledge the auditor's staff. Auditor Litz played a very important role, as did Kim Adamson and Vicky Hewitt, who are sitting by the auditor, and Olivia Larson, the commission recorder, was also present to take minutes for the FAN presentation. So I don't want to take up any more oxygen right now. Spokesman Keith Severson will be happy to go through the recommendations and present to you an executive summary. As one note, these recommendations are not binding for you, but they are recommendations from the Financial Action Network for you to consider as you would make some strategic and/or budgeting decisions here in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. And good morning, Keith.
Good morning.
Can I get you just your name and your address?
For the record, my name's Keith Severson. Address, citizen of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And it's a pleasure to be here this morning. It was about five months ago, I think, I received a call from Auditor Litz. And at that time, I had a feeling in my stomach that meeting, or that conversation may culminate with me being here this morning. So I appreciate that. Quick update on the FAN, Finance Action Network. The concept really originated about 12, 15 years ago. And it was a process that was really spurred by discussion of leaders at the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And from that, there was just an offer made out to all of the budgetary members of the chamber, which includes the school district, the counties, and the cities. And in recent past, the first one that was, really took place was Superintendent Holman called for a group for discussion at the school district. And to the best of my knowledge, they have implemented the process three times. As Commissioner Karski mentioned, there was first a charter, also in, that really talked about, and I just wanted to read that real quickly, "The primary purpose of the FAN is to receive outside perspective, so the county considers any appropriate necessary action to meet budgetary needs in the next three to five years." And that's really what the group was really looking at, was the process for the next three to five years. We've also provided you with an executive summary, and I'll quickly go through here a report that just talks about the findings. First of all, the group was made up of local area business and accounting professionals, and we were asked to analyze data, provide possible recommendations about future steps the county may take to ensure statutory obligations are met and financial stability is maintained. And I'm really proud of the group that was assembled. There was 10, and I believe we have seven here this morning, which included Robin Aiden, trust officer at First Bank and Trust, Dean Buckenburg, retired CPA, Tim Conda from the city of Sioux Falls, as well as Dennis Olson, city of Brandon, myself with Aid Bailey, Jason Ball, our president of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, John Erickson, First National Bank, Lynn Keller Forbes of Southeast Council of Government, Daryl Schmidt with First Premier Bank, and Teresa Seidel of the city of Hartford. The process I mentioned, we met over four meetings. Originally, we were intended to have three meetings. We extended that to four. That concluded here in the middle of December. We did collect and analyze a lot of data. And again, I want to thank the auditors and office. We do have packets, they're about this big, of information that was reviewed and was provided for our input. Additional data was provided with a lot of questions that was raised by the group. And we did provide with you, I believe that you have, the executive summary that we provided you today. The, how do I go here? Am I hitting the next one? Yeah, I'm hitting the... Push that. There you go. Thank you. What I first want to just say, the biggest thing in the report is really to identify the findings and really conclusions that were drawn from the analysis. And I think that's first what established the process in order to provide any recommendations as a conclusion of really the work that we had. And the summary of the findings was first and foremost was that Minnehaha County is on stable footing, and I think that was a base for discussion. The county's financial position has recently been identified, receiving that AA bond rating from Moody's. And Moody's concluded that the Minnehaha County is in high financial, is a high-quality financial risk, just meaning that it does have a significant balance sheet that would support the process. Factors cited by Moody's included stable operations, strong local government, strong local economy, and a sizable tax base bolstered by low unemployment, ongoing development, and positive demographics. In addition, other findings that the FAN identified quickly were the low debt burden. And one can say 75 million is not low debt, but it is low debt as it relates to its peers in the per capita. When we look at the 75 million, which includes about 45 million with the new jail expansion, when you look at the, the value of that on a per capita, that seemed to be well within reason. And then, the main point, revenue sources are limited to taxes, property taxes and wheel tax, which is really of a statutory nature. The fees charged for goods and services, the treasury fee, register of deeds, jail fees, other items that are included, the intergovernmental revenues, and fine and forfeiture. So we really analyzed, what are the options of raising, raising taxes and looking at, at raising revenue? I push that again, and it keeps, let you do that. Apologize. I just am pushing, yeah, just that one. We'll try it again. We identified that the overall revenue growth for the last, really, six years has been averaging, when you look at the property taxes, about $1 million a year. A 4% growth, but back in 2012, property tax revenue was about, just on its base itself, was about 27 million. In 2018, that'll be about 31.9. Growth comes from really the statutory 1% CPI increase that's based on statutory limit that's either 3% or inflation, whichever is less, and that has averaged about 1%. And then 3% of the 4% was with growth on new development. Nearly all revenue and fees are set at a specified level, and growth of the property taxes, I said, are, are limited there. And the general fund expense categories unfortunately are growing slightly greater than I think you're just going to have to do it for me. The county provision of statutory required services identify the real fact that 94% of all of those are statutory required. And we're, we're really talking about, it's not quality of life issues, but really life issues. And that's a real big observation as it looked at your budget. What is the difference between those two, and understanding that these are truly life issues that the county is dealing with? And so that you have 20% really of, of government, and then all of the other services, health and human services, the courts, law enforcement, about 2/3 of your budget resulted in HHS, courts, and law enforcement, and legal services. And so, really established a, a view of what, what the money is being spent on, and then leaving you a discretionary fund there of about 6%. Next. This is, understanding that the public safety is the cost driver, identified that law enforcement, court, and legal are all 66% of your general fund, 2/3 of that, with 47% in law enforcement and 16% on legal, giving us non-public safety costs of about 34%. Next slide. Those costs have increased at a higher rate over the past six years when we compare to the overall operating expenses. When you look at the overall operating expenses, seeing an increase of about 3.7% per year over the last six years. Noting that law enforcement has grown at 5.55, courts at 8.2, and legal at 9.7, that means those other services must be well below that target to get an average of 3.7. This also takes into account the impact of the property tax freeze that was set back in 1995, that was implemented in '95, but I think then started in 1997, and has essentially then just seen that froze for each county with growth being capped at 3% or the rate of inflation whichever is less. And we also identified that under state statute, the county general fund is capped at $12 per thousand, in understanding that, as we compare it to our current general fund level, at $2.9, so that we're well under that cap as it relates to the evaluation of, of what statutorily is, is available. One of the other items we looked at was really identifying and, and in part commending the county in itself as it relates to maximizing the efficiency of the county dollars. We did explore and asked a lot of questions regarding, well, what are you doing internally? How is that being effective? And we did identify that Minnehaha County has a duty to always provide improved results, increase efficiency, and make every dollar stretch as far as possible. While the list below is not exhaustive, we did include a few items that included IT, with some major steps there that generated cost savings, as well as Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, addressing some benefits there. Next slide. Pursuing grant dollars. We did identify that there were a number of opportunities throughout the budget as it relates to pursuing numerous grant dollars with the Emergency Management Commission Office and the auditors. The implementation of wellness programs across the board, the largest part of your cost, many are labor and thus fringe benefits. And the factor on that, health insurance and the benefits of that, is very excessive. And so we did look at the efforts that have been made in that area. And then conflict attorneys. As we talk about the RFP, a current opportunity to potentially decrease legal costs as it relates to the required coverage that is required as part of the statutory of legal costs in protecting our citizens. The intergovernmental cooperation, we identified that law enforcement facility, just shared facilities there, emergency management, highway department, planning and zoning, city-county joint elections, just sharing equipment and other cross-services that are really being shared, and trying to identify a variety of areas that, that really covered it. So when we looked at really the budget, what's being done internally, and the current analysis of, of really the operations, we then came up with these recommendations. Go back one. The first and foremost, I believe, is, is really identifying and, and recognizing that it's your responsibility to maintain and encourage a culture of innovation, efficiencies, creativity, and collaboration by continuing to ask department heads if there are new and better ways of meeting goals and providing services. It all starts at the top, and that's really identifying that. As I went through earlier, there's been a lot of that. So continuing that culture really makes a difference. Further develop and refine communication strategy. One observation from the entire group was, what are we hearing? How are we hearing about what's going on at the county? The difference between the quality of life issues to life issues, getting that out to the public, understanding what the budget is, and really evaluating the best way to get that information out and educate the taxpayer on what's going on at the county. Share stability plans to maintain reserves at necessary levels to preserve Moody AA bond rating and maintain operational stability of the county. A quick analogy of that was when we looked at the budget, maintaining that one bookend is where we are today, understanding that we have a strong balance sheet. If you want to look at five years down the road, here's another bookend. And what are you going to do between the differences to ensure that we've got a stable bookend on both sides? And so steps are needing to be taken to ensure that stability is maintained. And really looking at adequate funding, and we know how the budget goes, highs and lows and reserves and all of that, but really what responsibility do we have to maintain that stable foundation? Advocate for legislature, a lot comes from our place up in Pierre, and so we do need to continue to advocate for legislative action, follow up on the 2015 summer study for county funding, which included the following, the revenue sources, operating costs, increased demand. The next one, just list out a variety of other items as it relates to really what the legislation can do for the county. And then finally, based on a final conclusion, the FAN group did concur with the five-year incremental revenue and expense plan, which understands that property tax and other revenues will grow to 55.7 million. You already do have an authorized opt-out of up to 9.6, which I believe you're using about 9.1 of that. And that 7.9 million of additional opt-out will be needed to cover projected costs, including the jail expansion. So as you look at over the next five years, what's going to be needed to get to that point? The FAN group did recommend that the county commission use the opt-out as needed to fill the current and projected funding gap. The next slide just points that out as it relates to the, the 2018 budget, currently using about $9,025,000 of opt-out, which has available 9.6 million. So you're currently using about 94% of the opt-out available, and that it does appear in 2023 to maintain that balanced budget, that you'll be needing another 7.9 million. So with that, I just want to quickly thank the commission for taking the position to really look out and, and seek input from the business community, give you a few observations. Want to thank Auditor Litz and his department, Kim Adamson, and providing us all that information. And I'll just echo Dean's comments as it relates to Craig, it was very much appreciated all his service in connection with that. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Severson? Commissioner Bender?
First of all, I just really am very appreciative of you and the entire committee. It was a really top drawer list of people that got together, and it's, you know, great for us to have some outside folks look at it. And, you know, honestly, there wasn't much that I knew that I learned here. And I'm curious, from you coming in the outside and not being familiar with county finance, what was the most surprising thing that you learned?
I think the, for, for speaking for myself was, one, really observing that they are life issues versus the quality of life issues and what you really are dealing with. Two, there isn't, we all thought there might be this special pie or opportunity to really drive the budget or assist in the budget, and that your hands are really tied in providing those life issues. When you really look at 94% of all being statutory required, that it just didn't seem like there was a lot of flexibility in there. And I think that was the biggest observation that I had, and I'll share if there's any other members that would like to share any of their thoughts as it relates to just the impact of the budgets. You look at other areas, other budgets that you potentially can maneuver, and it didn't seem like there was a lot of flexibility. That was my observation.
Well, thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Mr. Bender?
Keith, one of the things I think that would be helpful for us in the future as an organization is not only be able to, the information that you provided today to help the employees understand where the growth of the county is going, but also the, the community in itself. And when you talk about that 7.9% quote, "need for an opt-out at the end," how that would affect each of the departments or programs that we're involved with? You talked about the quality of life versus the life option. And I think if we could describe that a little better to the people who frankly don't understand all the pieces, it would make some of those people who think we're nuts anyhow to be here, it would help us to explain why those issues are such a concern to the county, and frankly, the growth of what's going on in the county. So if we could recolor code it by department to show that 7.9% growth, or 7.9 million-dollar growth, that would be a way for us to use as a communication tool.
Exactly. And that goes back to our point number two, is recommendation of, of educating the taxpayer. And how do you best share that information? Where is the cost coming from? What's the driver? The growth of the area, the fact that we are growing county and community and absorbing all of those services? So how you best educate the taxpayer is really point number two.
Yep. Thank you for helping us with that.
Additional questions or comments?
If I could, just, just want to thank everybody. We reached out to all these people, and a lot of times it maybe came down through their employer saying, hey, I got an opportunity for you, so. Couldn't have done it. Some great questions. I think we probably spent close to eight to 10 hours working on all this in, in actual meetings, not including the homework they did on the outside that was requested of them for input, for thought processes. So this was really, truly a, a deep dive into looking at where we've been, where we're going, what we, what we maybe suspected we needed to do. And when you look at an $8 million need in the next four or five years, it's, it's a significant number. And just to thank them for their help and their time, some of you are retired, and took time away from your leisure time. So thank you for that. And then, and for those that took time away from their employment, thank you for that also.
Thank you.
Yep. Keith, I'd like to thank you too, and the group that came. I went to one meeting, and we kind of tried to spread out so each commissioner could attend them. They were extremely interesting, they were long, but I don't think that, actually, it was kind of, it was one of those meetings that's like, I wish this would go on a little longer because there was a lot of really good information. I thought it was interesting that your findings, that the revenue growth was, the CPI is 1%, which we knew that. But thank goodness for Minnehaha County and the continued growth we see because we get an additional 3%, which I'm sure that most counties in the state of South Dakota are not seeing that. So we're very fortunate as, as our city continues to grow and our rural county, we actually are getting some of those additional dollars that we sadly need. And the $8 million, I mean, I think most of us knew that that was what it's coming, but it's kind of scary to think that in the next four, three or four years, we're going to opt-out for an additional $8 million. And we sit up here and agonize over these budgets. And it's nice to have the community come back, you guys, and say, you guys really need to do this because it's hard to make those decisions, and it's hard to go out and say to your neighbors, yep, I just am going to raise your taxes again to cover these expenses. But I feel like we've got support behind because some of the leading people in our community have, have determined that that really is going to happen. And so I really appreciate the support that you are giving us and recognizing where we are and helping to spread word that this is not easy. We do take it seriously, and we aren't just, we aren't just spending money to spend money. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming. Thank you to all who took off time this morning to come again, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go on to item number 15, which is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Are there any questions for Carrie? Otherwise, I look for a motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for 2018, and there are a lot. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. You're right, we have quite a few. We have Lori Ayers at the State's Attorney's Office and Megan Glass at the State's Attorney's Office, both celebrating five years of service. We have Tim Hirschberger at the Public Defender's Office, celebrating five years of service. Adam Gonnerman at the Sheriff's Office, and Jerome Crum at the Highway, also celebrating five years of service. We have the following three people celebrating 10 years, Nikki Peterson at the Sheriff's Office, Dennis Clausen at the jail, and Nathan Stanton at the Juvenile Detention Center. Celebrating 15 years of service, we have Jamie Irwin at the Register of Deeds, Elliot Crane, Steve Luter, and Corey Stanley at the Sheriff's Office, and Rick Loanis at the jail. With 20 years of service, we have Steve Ryder at Juvenile Detention Center. And with 25 years of service, Jerry Winter at the Sheriff's Office.
And no one is here today on this list, are they?
Oh, Jamie.
Hi, thank you for coming, and thank you for your years of service.
Do they want to say anything?
Did you have anything you want to say?
No.
Okay. Okay. With item C is record volunteers in the county departments for December 2017.
273 is the winning number this month, so 273 people volunteering in seven areas throughout the county.
Which is amazing, especially during the holidays, that everybody's got their own busy schedules, but yet they came forward and helped us, which we really appreciate. All right. Item number 16 is applications for abatement, there are none. Item number 17 is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish requests for proposal for real estate brokers, real estate agent services for the sale of the 908 building. Craig Dewey, good morning again.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. At the end of last year, the bid process moved forward to sell the building located at 908 Northwest Avenue, and the commission determined that they would reject the bid that was received. And there are three options total in South Dakota statute for disposal of surplus property, and one of the two remaining options that the commission directed the commission office to take was to explore the possibility of retaining a real estate broker to sell this 908 building. So, an RFP was developed, reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office, and really focuses on including the following requirements for the RFP. Listing the names of the key personnel who would be assigned to work on the project if it would be a real estate firm, brokerage firm that would be selected, providing the relevant experience to really demonstrate the individual's track record of selling similar types of properties to be able to get the highest and best value for the county. Certainly outlining a timeline of availability, as far as a timeline that they would see it would take to dispose of the property and sell that. And also providing a valuation of what the broker or real estate agent believes is an accurate evaluation of the property, just to get a sense of some of the different price ranges that you as a commission might expect to see when offers are coming in. And next item is outlining plan of operation and marketing and the other services really, again, for obtaining the highest price for the county. And then also providing a proposed contract. The RFP submission deadline is scheduled for 10:30 in the morning on February 7th, and the commission would take action then on those submissions at a meeting later in February. This is just an update and a notice to authorize the auditor to publish, but you can certainly provide any feedback and make any changes that you'd like to see in the RFP that you reviewed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Craig or a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish the RFP on real estate broker.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I will comment that last week, there were three commissioners here, and we did pass a, was it a resolution, Craig? To move forward with taking a bill to the legislature to try to find sponsors for a bill to the legislature to try to change the ninety percent that a broker would be required, ninety percent or greater, that a broker would be required for the selling of this property. There's kind of a disparity in what the law is. If we do a sealed bid or we auction it, we could take the highest bid offered, but the highest bid offered could be twenty dollars, and we could go, and that would be acceptable. But with a broker, you have to take greater than ninety percent of the appraised value, which kind of puts us in a box. The one sealed bid that we had was about forty-five percent of the appraised value. We would like to see greater than forty-five percent. And so we will be taking a bill, hopefully, to the legislature this session. So we're doing some work on that, so just to bring you up to date.
Madam Chair, you expressed it very well, but the fact is, we could have taken forty-one percent on the other form, and there is absolutely no intention of this commission to sell it for anything less than the maximum we can get. If we could get double the assessed value, I might be a little happy. If we got three times, yes, I'd be happy. But the fact is that the law, the way it's written, could allow it to be basically pulled out from under you for pennies on the dollar, and we need to sell that property, and we need to maximize the income we get from it.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Okay. With that, we'll move on to item number eighteen, which is a planning and zoning notice. Item A is the first reading and authorizes the auditor to publish notice of a hearing of ordinance amendment seventeen dash zero three addressing accessory buildings. Kevin Hookman, good morning, Kevin.
Yes, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This is the first reading for this ordinance amendment. It is ordinance amendment addressing accessory buildings. The public, the planning commission requested zoning staff to review this, as it is our top request for conditional use permit. So the review came up with a table to base accessory buildings on the size of the parcel. So this hearing will be for January twenty-third, based on our publications, and this is to authorize the publication.
Any questions for Kevin? Is there a motion?
There is.
A motion to authorize the publication. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of the hearing of the ordinance seventeen dash zero four addressing accessory buildings. I had to read this twice, so I knew why I was doing this.
Yes, Kevin Hookman again. So this is essentially the same ordinance amendment, but in the joint Sioux Falls area. So it'll, again, it was a request of the joint Sioux Falls Planning Commission, and this is to authorize the publication for notice for the joint hearing on the twenty-third of January.
Is there any questions? Otherwise, I look for a motion.
I'd make the motion to authorize.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin.
Chairman Heiburger?
Yes.
Can I ask Kevin something? Kevin, as you know, the city gets a permit from us to operate the landfill, right?
Yes.
So do they have any responsibility to interdict hazardous and toxic waste from going in there?
And I guess I'm not sure.
Well, it appears that they're not enforcing any rules that they may have on that, and that concerns me. So check on that if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak about anything that is not on the current agenda, which I think we've hit everything but the kitchen sink, so, okay. We'll go on to regular business. Item number twenty is a public hearing considering applications for retail on-sale liquor licenses for Garrettson Sportsman Club, forty-eight, six, zero, five, two hundred and fifty-fifth Street, Garrettson, South Dakota. Olivia.
Yes, I believe Steve Davis is here. He submitted the application for the retail on-sale liquor license for Garrettson Sportsman's Club, and I've received no concerns or objections from State's Attorney's Office, Sheriff, or Planning Department.
Okay. Good morning, Steve. Did you have any comments? If you'd just identify yourself, I'm sorry.
My name is Steve Davis. I'm a citizen of Harrisburg, Lincoln County, but the president of the Garrettson Sportsman's Club.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Davis? Is there a motion? Oh, public hearing, sorry. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this other than Mr. Davis, pros or cons? And I see nothing, so then I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve this application for retail on-sale liquor license.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming.
We'd like to really thank Olivia for all of her help.
Thank you. She's a good worker.
Her too.
Item number twenty-one is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand and eighteen Joint Security Protection Agreement between South Dakota Department of the Military and Minnehaha County to provide security services for the one-fourteenth Fighter Wing of the South Dakota Air National Guard. Keith Winia, good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Keith Winia, Air Guard Division Supervisor. Good morning, Commission. Just seeking your signature for the two thousand and eighteen Joint Security Protection Agreement. This year, our funding in the agreement is for nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is more enough to cover our operational costs for the year. So you'll be seeing me again here in a couple of months to adjust the amount on the contract to what exactly our operational cost is, so there won't be any surplus there, so.
Any questions for Keith? Otherwise, I look for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Keith. Item number twenty-two is authorize the chairman to sign a final draft services agreement between Minnehaha County and Short Elliott Hendrickson's Incorporated, S.H.E., for replacement of structure number fifty dash two ninety-three dash two hundred. DJ Boothby, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. On November sixth, beginning of November, we received the type, size, and location study, or the preliminary engineering study from Short Elliott Hendrickson, S.E.H., out of Minnesota in Sioux Falls. And that preliminary study recommended a one hundred and nineteen-foot-long, two-span, pre-stressed, concrete girder bridge to replace the existing structure out there. And so this agreement is the final design agreement that will allow S.E.H. to complete the final design and bidding documents for reconstructing the bridge in two thousand and eighteen. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time. Otherwise, look for your approval of the agreement, and the agreement amount is fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three is authorize the chairman to sign a preliminary agreement, excuse me, design services agreement between Minnehaha County and the Civil Design Inc., CDI, for replacement structure number fifty dash two oh five dash zero six zero. DJ.
Commissioners, this agreement is a preliminary engineering agreement with CDI out of Brookings. This is to replace structure fifty dash two oh five dash oh sixty, which is on County Highway one fourteen, just east of Baltic. The existing structure is thirty-two foot wide, sixty-two foot single span, a single-span structure that during last year's inspection was identified some rapidly accelerating issues with the beams, and it was placed on a twelve-month cycle. It was not posted at the time, but it is looking like if we don't replace it, that it will be posted soon with the issues that we have on county highway structures being posted and there being an elevator in Baltic. We'd like to get ahead of this one and replace it before it is posted. So the agreement for preliminary engineering is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The proposal and agreement have been reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office and asking for your approval. We're hoping to get the design completed, preliminary design completed, move right into final design in the next couple of months, and hopefully be able to bid that yet this year.
Any questions for DJ?
If you don't mind, DJ. Good morning. Thanks for being here. What's that picture we're looking at on the right?
Okay, so it said that the bridge has some beam issues. This is a picture of the abutment, which is the bridge ends, and then the beam that seats on top of the abutment. And you can see that there's some degrading concrete, some concrete falling off. I don't know if you can see the mouse over the picture, but right in that area right there, there's some concrete falling off. And so in order for the bridge capacity to remain as designed, the amount of area that sits on top of the abutment has to remain the same as it was originally constructed. And when starts, when concrete starts to fall off like this, the amount of area that is actually bearing on the abutment decreases, and so the capacity of the structure decreases. And that's the biggest concern. These beams, they're starting to fall apart. We are very familiar with this type of construction in the nineteen-sixties, nineteen-fifties. Some of the concrete that was used on this particular type of beam has not held up to the salt that we put on the roads. And so we see this all over the county. These types of beams, they start falling apart, and in this case, they lose bearing capacity.
Okay, okay. The other question, the last bridge we talked about in the last item we did was a hundred and twenty-foot double span, and this is a sixty-two-foot single span. I mean, is that, is there some significance to the span of the bridge? I mean, is there a?
Typically, the, in Minnehaha County, what will dictate how long a bridge is, is the crossing, the river that it's crossing, or the creek that it's crossing. The creek that this one is crossing is pretty small, and so the existing span length is sixty-two feet. The new span length will probably be seventy-five feet or something like that. On the previous one, that's on Ditch Road, just southeast of Brandon, or not Ditch Road, Spook Road. And the creek that that one crosses is a much larger creek. It has a larger volume of water that goes through, and so you just need a longer span width to cross over the creek.
Okay.
And other things that can impact that would be like the height of the road over the waterway. We don't have any really significantly deep channels in Minnehaha County where there's a two-hundred-foot drop off the bridge down to the water or anything like that. So what we typically see is something ten feet to thirty feet maybe over the waterway. So our span length isn't really dictated by how high over the water we are, it's more how wide the channel is.
Additional questions for DJ? Look for a motion on this bridge?
To approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, DJ.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Item number twenty-four is consider a motion to accept or decline an accident claim offer of sixty-one hundred dollars for damages to the two thousand and four Ford Expedition from Planning and Zoning. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, before you is a memo from Scott Anderson, our planning director, because our building inspector was involved in a car accident on rural South Dakota on December eleventh. The vehicle, which was a two thousand and four Ford Expedition, was totaled. The NADA clean retail value is five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and through the insurance company of the other driver, they have offered sixty-one hundred dollars. So before you is a release for the property damage for the chairman to sign for that sixty-one hundred dollars.
Are there any questions for Carol? A motion?
There is. A motion to approve.
A motion and a?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I will say that thankfully, no one was hurt in this accident. So that is the best part of the day. Number twenty-five is annual review of the Minnehaha County facility's power outage protocol, response protocol. Craig Dewey.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office, for the last time here today. Each year, the county is required to review its power outage response protocol, and that has to happen no later than February first. So I'm just here to give the commission an update that at the end of last year, that the power outage response protocol, it's on the county's internet site in the policies and procedures section of the website, that was sent out to department heads, and department heads were asked to review the policy as needed and make any tweaks to their already-existing protocols that are based on this plan to make sure that in the event that power would go out in a counting facility, that employees and also any members of the public who are in the department at the time are kept safe, and to make sure that proper procedures are in place to make sure that we can work to get power restored in a timely manner as well.
Okay. Are there any questions for Craig? I'll have to say, in the last seven years, this, we had a power outage at one point, and we hadn't been reviewing this yearly, and so it came forward, and we put it on our list of things to do to make sure that we review the policy yearly so that everyone is familiar with what happens when the power goes out. I don't think we had any issues, but it was a little scramble since we weren't bringing this to the forefront on a regular basis, and we did review it. And so it was, sorry. So it's just nice to see that it is coming back every year. We are reviewing it, and department heads are aware of it. And that was, we don't need a, we don't need a motion for that. That's just our informational, so, okay. Thank you, Craig. Item number twenty-six is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Okay. Mr. Barth, did you want to recognize this? You don't have to give it to me.
I was going to bring it up under new business, Madam Chair.
Okay. So is there any old business? Is there any new business?
I would like to just comment that today's news includes information that Captain Walsh has received a national award, and the fact that he's here protecting us today, I think he ought to come up and take a bow or say hello to the citizens that he protects on an everyday basis.
I think that'd be great. You can at least, you can come and say Happy New Year if nothing else, but he's on the front page of the August Leader, if you haven't seen the August Leader yet today.
Mike Walsh, Minnehaha County Sheriff. Thank you very much, Mr. Barth. I would like to point out that the person who wrote the article is here as well, Danielle Ferguson.
Good morning.
Happy New Year, and it was a very interesting case, and I think one thing you can take away from it is the fact that our department works very well with other departments, and we always have a very strong investigative effort when working with the FBI, and whomever calls, we're always happy to help, so, but I thank you very much for pointing it out.